But for purposes, for our purposes, it's, it's early June, okay? And that's, you'll see it referred to as sixtieth percentile or early fire season. And then, and then we have what we call late fire season. The late fire season is to capture that part at the tail end of the fire season, which is early September, if you will, and going into September until we get the first fall rains. And that's when our fuels are the driest. And sometimes when we get these, these northeast wind events, we get relative humidities that are exceptionally low. And so it's a, it's a means by which to capture perhaps the other end of the fire season. So then we can bookmark it and take a look at it and say, okay, what is our, what is our landscape book like? So when we take, can you move me forward to the flame length once, Arthur?
Just tell me that.
Oh, I will. Keep going, keep going, keep going, right there. So part of the reason I wanted to do sixtieth percentile is, for example, you see on the left-hand side, the red part is up where the old golf course is? Well, or the part that's by the Oak Ridge community or on the central west side of Wairega?
Yeah.
Well, think about this. If it's red early June, it's going to be problematic the whole summer. And so that might be a place to look at, that might be a place to look at an opportunity to do some work. And then roll it forward to late fire season and you can see how the area lights up even more. And so it becomes even a little bit more problematic. Yes, this is a Wairega city-centric presentation. I have this for all of the areas within the Wairega area Fire State Council. So this is just flame length. So this is just flame length is how hot a fire burns. And it's just an indicator of a firefighter's ability to suppress or not a fire. It may help us to identify opportunities for doing some suppression work. Okay, next slide. So the other piece that we're concerned about is how fast does a fire move? Okay, so you got, you have, you know how hot it is, another question is how fast it will move? And so how do you gauge how fa- how fast a fire will move? So what we did for this analysis is we said if the, if the, if the advancement of a fire, rate of spread is ROS, rate of spread. If the advancement of the fire is less than what a fire crew can produce in terms of production, or how quickly they can build line, whether it's with bulldozers or hand cruiser engines, they'll be successful if they can get around the fire. So, so you'll see on the sub, in the next map, if it's green, that means you, they can produce line faster than that fire can advance. Conversely, the red, which is, which we've experienced, we've seen where the rate of spread, the fire advancement is far quicker, and what additional attack resources can do. And that presents a whole different set of issues and concerns. Next slide. So in your packet, you'll have, you'll have the, the rate of slop, the rate of spread work that we did. And again, you can see, again, sixtieth, early fire season, ninety-seventh, late fire season. And the darker the color, the more quickly the fire would like to burn. And you're starting to see some patterns here when you take a look at how hot the fire will burn and then how fast the fire will burn. Okay, next slide. So we put the two things together, okay? We think we put flame length, or how hot the fire is, and rate of spread, how fast the fire will move. And if, and we put something together, we're talking, we're calling for right now initial, an initial attack suppression opportunity matrix, if you will. And so if flame lengths are low and rate of spread is slow, then our, our, our model initial attack forces would be able to suppress a fire, okay? And conversely, if in the red cannot contain, which will light up areas that say, if flame lengths, if the fire's going to be so hot and the fire's going to move too quickly, that's going to be a very problematic area. And probably is an area we would like to look at. Because we know it's an area that is going to be very difficult for firefighters and suppression forces to deal with primarily during initial attack. So, next slide. So here's what that matrix looks like. Again, I'm, I'm staying city-centric here. And this, the pattern really jumps out here now. And it's pretty much as we saw when we were putting it all together. And you can see some areas of concern that are certainly, and probably is reinforcing things that your vets are already telling you. I know Jerry's, Jerry's already saying this. So I know this really fits with his issues of concern. But what this does is it validates it, number one. And number two is it will make you more competitive in the grant process. Because now you've got the work, you've got the analysis that can show that, oh my gosh, Wairega's got some issues that needs to be dealt with. So again, you look at early fire season, and you've got some areas of concern, of one which I talked with the fire chief and the, and the police chief about, which is that, for example, the Oak Ridge community area, retirement community, very problematic. I knew that five years ago. And, and it, and it jumps out as an issue. And again, you've still got that, the, the, the west side, the northern part of the city, and then again, that whole nice old golf course area that continues to stick out. You also have, which shouldn't be a surprise to you, is that whole Butcher Hill area. And, and the beginning of the Kilgore Hills, which I think that does remove your area a little bit, doesn't it?
Yeah, mostly southwest.
It's mostly southwest, but there's an opportunity for two fire departments to work together. So that's also the purpose behind this. Next slide. So we, we grabbed a database from Microsoft that has all of the structures. And so we were able to take this, throw it into GIS, and so now we can take a look at structures and overlay that on where these, these problematic fire areas are. So we, we've got the structures, and now we're looking at the areas that are problematic. Next slide. And you begin to see, again, you know, maybe there are some neighborhoods of concern, some areas of concern. If you, can I have the next slide, please? There we go. If I, if I zoom in on this, and you take a look at, for example, the Bill Bridge area here, and you can see that it's not exactly in a red pixel of a high area of concern, but it's darn near close to one. And so we're going to account for that in the next piece of work. I'm going to show you the kind of the last part of the modeling that we've done. I'll take the next slide, please. So what we did was we said, okay, let's put a three-hundred-foot buffer around all the structures, and any time you touch a red or orange pixel, red and orange are, you might contain, well, highly unlikely you'll contain it, but maybe a good fire person put it to red, which is, you know, uh-oh. So we put those two together, and any time there was a hole in that three-hundred-foot buffer that intersected with one of those pixels, we drew a prism or a polygon around it. And that's what this map represents. Next slide, please. So now you can see, for example, go back to the Oak Ridge area. That whole area is circled in red. And, you know, part of the reason for that is, and again, you know, there's, there's been a tremendous amount of research with respect to, again, going back to home hardening and defensive space. Just cleaning off your roof, just taking the needles off of a roof, huge, huge. And that's the point of putting this three-hundred-foot buffer. Because if you have a fire raging towards a home that can't withstand sparks that are flying, that's very problematic. So now we have areas of opportunity, if you will, or potential actionable items, that things that the city, the fire department, the police department can more focus on perhaps, okay? And it's just, all it is, is it's a representation. We haven't set priorities yet. We've just identified areas that are problematic. Next slide, please. So some of the things that we, I'm just, you know, throwing ideas out there is getting very active, getting the city very active in preparedness training. We're going to be going for another grant, talk about that. I've been talking with Jackie Nucci, and oh yes, we'll hopefully do another Listo's Grant in 2022. I don't want to wait till 2022. We're looking for other options to talk with Jerry and Bernie about that as well. It might give you some focus for, some ideas for focused court enforcement, for example. Okay, areas you might want to look at. There might be areas that are very simple to deal with, that are just simply areas that need to be mowed, which is far easier than areas of, hey, you need to do chainsaw work or mastication work. So there are things that, based on what kinds of fuels, you know, you might have some opportunities to take advantage of. Aggressive grant searches. As there is fuels reduction, I talked about Oak Ridge, I'm going to talk about Wairega Creek here in a minute. You know, there was a grant that Wairega Fire State Council did a number of years ago with chipping. Very few people took up on it. I hope that we could get a lot more people excited now.
Yeah.
Home hardening, so on and so forth. There, there are lots of them. There are lots of them. Next slide, please. So that's, so that's the focus on life, life safety, and home. Well, the last thing that, last thing is, so what about, what about roads? And what about area treatments? And what about other types of treatments? Not just specifically focused at, at residents and at structures. And so our analysis, when ninety-eight percent finished, and the last piece that we're putting together is, is these two maps. Now, the map on the left, let me explain that to you. That's called burn probability. And what burn probability is, is that we burned twenty-five thousand fires across the entire landscape and modeled them to see how they would burn. And so the redder the area, the more times a pixel burned, based on those twenty-five thousand fire starts. So, and this is probably a better indicator of where fire wants to burn versus where fire has burned. So this actually probably has more benefit to us, is to know where it wants to burn versus taking a look at history and where it has burned. So, so we're going to take this, and we're doing an overlay with the one on the right, which is the initial attack suppression map. And as we speak, our GIS guy is putting roads together, and highlighting roads of concern. We're going to highlight areas of concern, and, excuse me, we'll vet it. We'll vet it with Jerry and probably the police department, certainly with Steve, once this is all done. We're not going to do it in the vacuum, so. Oh, thank you. Okay. Appreciate it. But it certainly opens up some, it certainly opens up some, hopefully it opens some eyes and provides us with some opportunities. And so, next slide, please. So we're due from here. So I'm, I'm in the wrap-up phase. I've got fifteen seconds left.
(laughter)
So Joan was on me last time.
I'm not ready to meet now.
Oh.
Wayne's a lot nicer.
Okay. So we, we have fulfilled, it's the same as three grants to get this far, and we have fulfilled those grants, but the CWPP was not an end product of these grants. We just, we just turned in a report to CAL FIRE that basically all the work that you saw there was a part of that grant, this mow analysis. So we're, we're, we are bound and determined, there's three of us, that, or four of us, and we will get this done. Okay, we, we will get this done. We, we are hoping to get it done in June. What I'm asking you to do is to be a signer of this, to support this, to, and I, and I'll, I'll, I'll need to figure, I don't know how to do that. I don't know what needs to be done. I'm sure Steve can help me, or Dwayne can help me, but what that means, because I've, I've talked to Jerry about it, you know, and Jerry will sign it, and you sign it, and Steve gives him the approval, but I also think the city council, a lot of them endorse it as well. And when we get close to the, more close to the final report, you'll certainly have an opportunity to look at it. And then if you need another presentation on the specifics of the CWPP, or some kind of an action that you want to take, I'd be happy to do a quick summary of that, if, if that's how you work. I don't know, so I'm a little bit ignorant on that.
We will work that out.
Yeah, I'm sure you will.
Yeah, definitely.
So one of the things that, that, that we want to do is to bring the city and all the fire departments together, because ultimately it's the fire department and those initial responders, police department, and all those first responders, that we need to meet their needs and the city's needs. And what are your priorities? And I'm going to talk about that in one quick second. There are lots of grant opportunities out there. And we're, we're trying to fast-track one right now that closes May nineteenth. But we want to, but we want to certainly keep moving this thing forward. I'll talk about that in just a second. And who can bring what to the table? Who can bring what to the table? And ultimately have some shelf-ready projects. Places that you've already identified, because monies are going to be, monies are going to be coming forward. And let me see if this is where I need the... For example, Newsom just signed a bill, April thirteenth, five hundred and thirty-six million dollars. You know what it's for? For fire prevention. It's for fuels work. It's for home hardening. It's for doing work around homes.
Nice.
And nobody knows how that's going to work yet. So I think it's, I think it's incumbent upon all of us to be ready and to have some shelf-ready projects. And so we're, we're, we're going to work our way through on what does that look like and how does that mean? So once we can learn about that, hopefully we'll be ready, and you'll know your mechanisms you need and how, and how we'll do all of that. Next slide, last slide. (inaudible).
All good.
Some things we're pursuing right now under this current CAL FIRE grant cycle is, and we're doing this with the Northern California Resource Center, is a grant that will provide support and funding for the Wairega Fire Department and South Wairega Fire Department to work with community members and strong proactive education. I don't know what that will look like yet, but that's what we need to talk about, and I'll talk to Steve about that. We need to, we need to bring everybody together. That's very problematic. When we did the Siskiyou County CWPP, there's projects, mapping work over here, and there's mapping work over here, and there's mapping work over here, and there's things over there. And so we are going to, we're putting a grant together that's going to try, not going to try, it will bring, bring all the entities together. The fire departments, the cities, the, the Forest Service, CAL FIRE, you've got Shasta Valley RCD, you've got ORCAL RCD, you've got Northern California Resource Center, you've got the National Resource NCR, NCRS. That, that, excuse me. And so we're putting a grant together for the next two years is to take this CWPP and actually bring people together quarterly and say, where's the money? Where are your projects? Let's move forward. And so we're, that's what we're trying to do for you. And we're looking at a project in Wairega Creek that we've talked about. Hope maybe in Laiaca, that part of, perhaps, we're going to talk about that here in a little bit. And then I know that Bernie, South Wairega, is looking at a project up in Kilgore Hills, which I think would also benefit the city of Wairega. So we're, we're going to be getting together this Friday, a group of people. And we'll be talking about these and some other things, just to kind of initiate some of that coordination. And I apologize, I'm four minutes, forty-five seconds.
No, that's excellent. A lot, a lot of information.
Good information.
A lot of information, good information. I like the Wairega Creek thing you're talking about too, because obviously that's in my backyard, Greenhorn part of it is. The huge problematic thing I see on that is we, the tons and tons of blackberry bushes that are dried out. I keep them cleared out on my side of the property of the creek, obviously, and clean them out. But unfortunately, the opposite side, the landowners and stuff do their, it's been a huge problem. There's been fires before when it was owned by Peter's Truck Lines and stuff like that before. And there was huge problems with that, but, you know, with the blackberry bushes. I don't know, is that something that we're going to, if we're going to get it possibly explored in the future going up through the creek?
That, you know, that's, that's, you know, Dwayne, you think about what happened north of us. Wairega Creek, I would hope, kind of rises as an area that needs to be looked at. And I, I, I can't speak for Steve, I can't speak for Jerry, and I, you know, I don't know if we need to start small, have success, and then build, or, you know, how this needs to work. There's just a whole lot of things you've got to do to pull this off.
Yeah.
But yes, it would need to include, Dwayne, it would need to include that.
If I look at that, especially with all the, you know, homeless activity and stuff, and you know, as we, here a week ago, on the Greenway, on Overland Road, we just had a fire right there.
I noticed about that.
Yeah, that tree exploded. It was, it was unreal. That was a, a department thing, or we had Wairega Fire Department, South Wairega Fire Department, and CAL FIRE, all three of them were there, and I was happy to see everybody joining teams and jumping in there and getting it out right away. I was, I was there seeing, it was awesome to see everybody working together, putting it out immediately, because that thing was just explosive. It really was. To be this early in the year and see that, it's just alarming. It really is alarming.
Yeah, we should do one.
Well, there's a lot of fuel.
I'm worried.
And so I, so I appreciate what you did with, there's a lot of fuel particularly from Oberland to behind the old hospitals, behind the old... And, and, and it's not just the bushes. I mean, we've been outlooked at it when we are assessing homeless and trying to figure, you know, trying to make decisions on where to go with that. And you've got dead, you've got stags, you've got dead ranches just hanging and stuff, and all that would go up, so. It would be, you know.
It's something we definitely have.
Something to continue to look at.
Yeah.
And as Jay said, if we start small, then maybe we expand later. But at least we get started and we support this.
Yeah.
And Jay's done a lot, Jay, and, and all, everybody, Jerry and Bernie and all the other agencies have done a lot of work. And I certainly thank you for that. And then I would like to support you on that, both emotionally and physically.
No, Jay.
And in writing.
Well, and in writing, yes, that's one of my emotions.
Well, we, I, I met with Shasta Valley RCD last Friday. They're looking at a project at the north end of town. I gave them the work that we had done, and say, go forth and use it, it's okay. And you've got the, okay, Natural Conservation Service, Natural Conservation Service, they're doing some projects. And then you've got, you've got the work, you know, this, this great work with the Craigie Project. It's, it was very beneficial for the Badger Fire, and you got work going up in Greenhorn. There's a lot of work, and again, that part of that grant was to, was to get, get some coordination here.
Well, I'd definitely like to hear the idea of, like I said, having these projects basically turnkey-ready. So if there's money that does come about, that we have it already identified, we jump into it and start administering that right away versus, you know, chasing our tails, knowing that we're behind, trying to find a project, already have it identified and ready to go. So that's good.
Excellent. So Mayor, I just wanted to say that that is something that we, with Jay and his team putting together. First of all, I think there's some great graphics here that really support being able to have a competitive grant application. The next part is to get the working group together to identify either off-the-shelf projects for future grants or to get going on the ones that are out there. Right now, it's competitive. Everybody's in the same boat of looking at their fire stuff. But we need to get in there, build the capability, the capacity. There's environmental reviews that take place on these things that, from my perspective, take, I think, forever and then a nut, you know, doubled, sort of thing.
Yeah.
But those, those take some time to get done, so we want to try to get ahead of this. And I think that in the past, there's not been as much money available, and there's, and some of the efforts have been perhaps not as well coordinated as they need to be. So we like to coordinate those efforts with our, our partners, essentially putting out fires around Wairega, which is mostly South Wairega and CAL FIRE, but there are other partners as well. And really try to focus in. One of the things that I will tell you is that in order to reach the May nineteenth, May nineteen, seventeen, I can't remember.
May nineteenth.
May nineteenth deadline, that if there is a project that we think will work in there, we're going to go for it.
Let's move on then. I think we're, I think, I think we're moving on, aren't we, number three, is all we are here? Discussion possible action consent calendars. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted in one motion unless a member of the council wishes to remove it, an item from discussion, or a member of the audience wishes to comment on an item. City manager recommends approval of the following consent calendar items. A, approval ratification of payments issued from March twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one through April eleventh, twenty-twenty-one. B, approval of the minutes of the meeting held on April sixth, twenty-twenty-one. And C, waive all full text readings of the ordinance on the agenda. Orders shall be introduced and adopted by title only.
That's scary.
So what is the wishes of the council?
This is Councilman McCoy. I would like to make a motion to adopt the consent calendar as listed in item three of our agenda. That's three, A, B, and C.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to second that motion. I just have one question.
Yes.
I want to make sure we read it twice on April sixth, because there are two separate minutes in them.
Oh, I think we're clear on that one.
Number one.
Yeah. I think we're good on it.
Whoops. Or try to talk.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second. Mr. Baker, would you call, roll call, please, sir?
Sure. Mayor for Ten Barre.
Aye.
Uh, Councilor Freeman?
Aye.
Councilor Middleton?
Aye.
Councilor McCoy?
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye, all right.
(inaudible).
Yeah. All right, number four, discussion possible action, adopt a resolution approving the, an application for the CDBG FY twenty-twenty-one, NOFA dated twenty, January twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one, and authorizing the city manager to execute grant agreements on other related documents for, for the following project. Planning grant, new fire station for the Wairega Volunteer Fire Department. And Cindy, you're going to start this off?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. You can, Mr. Mayor, maybe the council?
Can you get closer to the mic or pull it closer to you or something?
If it'll work. Remember, we...
Can you hear me?
(laughter)
Do you want to, we care here?
Not, do not relive. Not throw up, so not.
Okay. Shall I just?
Now I can hear you.
Okay.
There you go.
There we are, now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As you're aware, on April sixth, we held a public hearing so that we could have public comments to gather opinions, comments, critiques, or plans to submit a CDPG application for a planning grant for our new fire station for the Wairega Volunteer Fire Department. Council directed the city to move forward with this. We created the resolution that's required by CDPG. And if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
All right. Council, any questions?
I thought when Cindy presented it last time, she did a wonderful job presenting it. And I understood it very well, and I appreciate all the work she's done on it.
Yep.
I agree.
I do, and I'll listen to her as a council member.
Is...
Do you have to do public comment again?
Uh, I was just going to ask. We have...
Not, not this time.
Not this time, we'll do it. Okay, thank you. Is there, is there any public comments you know, can we tell?
I'm seeing none at this time.
Okay, great. All righty.
Council Middleton, I will second the motion.
So, who, who did this? Did you? Oh, Joe, I'm sorry. All righty, we have a motion and a second. Uh, Mr. Baker, please, do roll call.
Mayor for Ten Barre?
Aye.
City Councilmember Freeman?
Aye.
City Councilmember McCoy?
Aye.
City Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Mayor, Mayor Kate?
Aye, all righty. Let's move on.
Thank you, Cindy, very much.
Yes, thank you, Cindy. Number five, discussion, discussion possible action. A, approval of the summer twenty-twenty-one swim, Wairega Swim and Activity Program at the Montague Community Park and Pool for Wairega's youth and the, and the, this says "and the", it doesn't say anything after that, that's interesting. And B, approval of a supplemental appropriation of six thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars to be allocated between FY fiscal year twenty-twenty-one and fiscal year twenty-twenty, twenty-one-twenty, excuse me. It's weird, okay? Joe, this is yours.
This is my name.
Yes, it is.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'd like to thank Reddick and Arthur for the help on this and working with the right unit in the city of Montague and state. Everyone was very excited about it. Uh, the city of Montague is more than happy for our, um, our kids to come over there. And so, as you can see before you, um, the way that the reimbursement would happen. Um, last year, instead of the three days a week, we went to two days a week, and this year we're proposing the same.
Okay.
So that, uh, the city of Montague, because, uh, Grenada School is coming those three days, Monday, Wednesday, Friday.
Oh.
So we would be doing Tuesday, Thursday, and it also sits better for the YMCA staff, uh, because they also have programs Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and then leave their staff open.
Gosh.
So last year, we had, um, an average, an average of twelve to sixteen, I think it was. Reddick, twelve to sixteen students. And this year, and the year before, I think it was like twenty, twenty students. So, but that was, you know, that was, uh, during, uh, the pandemic. And so this year, as we're in a lesser restrictive, uh, orange, you know, we're hoping that we'll get more kids.
Yeah.
But this is, what I just said, based on, is the things I said that we had last year. And I... And I think we used all of that, did we, Reddick?
We did not.
So, uh, I think that it's more than happy to cover actually kids. And, uh, the kids so enjoy it.
Oh, yeah.
You know, and, and, uh, Warrica, and Montague appreciates, they, they're no business because we pay them two dollars per student, per, per kid. And, uh, and Sage has been wonderful to work with too. And they're happy to pick up the kids in front of the Y M C A again, like they did last year. Uh, and the Y M C A is happy to provide. They, they actually are coordinating it because they're having the applications right there at the Y M C A. The parents come in and fill it out. The parents bring the kids in there, the parents pick the kids up at the Y M C A. And so, uh, you know, they take on a lot of the work. So, um, for the little bit that they're getting out of it, I think it's well worth it. So I would like to recommend that we approve our summer program. I think this is the third year, Reddick?
This will be the third year.
The third year that we've done this and it's been very successful so far.
Are we, how many, so how many kids we're doing, a lot? Twenty? Twenty, okay, so I thought it read.
Twenty kids, two days a week, that's what we're budgeting for.
Good, Mr. McCoy?
I would, you've already made the motion.
I've made the motion, yes.
But before we go on, I would like to, Joe's already thanked Cindy of Warrica. I would like to thank, uh, the Warrica, Y M C A, the board of directors, uh, their, their executive director, their, uh, staff, um, as well as, um, uh, Montague, the city of Montague, the pool. Work schedules in. So I think it's a great program. I think that, uh, Reddick, Steve, and Joan and Art have, uh, you know, it's, it's a program that's been going on for three or four years now. It's working well. In essence, a pool, it, it's not the best, but, you know, in essence, a pool, it's a wonderful program. So I would like, uh, McCoy would like to second the motion.
Awesome, great. And like I said, thanks again, Joe and everybody. Um, so we got a motion by Joe Smith Freeman and a second by Paul McCoy, Mr. Baker.
Mayor for ten, Barry.
Aye.
City Councilmember Freeman?
Aye.
City Councilmember McCoy?
Aye.
City Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Mayor K.
Aye, all right, great, thanks again, this is awesome. Good program, much needed. Hopefully it'll, uh, we'll be able to, uh, do our part here and soon on having a real pool. One of these days, we'll find out on that.
Later.
Thanks, Steve.
Got so much information, thank you.
It's, it's the standard California.
Yeah, no kidding.
Still later, Steve, though.
It's later, yeah. All right, number six, discussion possible action, reopening the seat, the city recreational and community services that include A, park reservations, B, community center reservations, and C, community theater reservations. And are you starting off this one, Mr. Baker?
Uh, probably, I, I, um, rather than come on up to the, the mic. Okay, and then I.
She's over there. Sure.
I'm like, who's he saying?
I don't know.
And then I am hoping that, I'm hoping Matt is online.
Oh, good.
All right, I mean, they were, so, um, I'm gonna let them run with it. I just wanted to say that it sounded easy. And in concept, it is.
Right.
But it got more complicated real quick.
As it was, yeah.
And with that.
So we'll start easy, more complex, then most complex.
There you go.
Um, so park reservations, um, those are outdoor, recruit picnic area on that. And so, um, definitely, um, once we can come on in and make a reservation, we think we can do that right away.
Good.
Work with the campus, um, on, um, with that. And, um, but we'll get the fines and everything else up to the parks and attendance for the campus for that. If, um, if they want to volleyball nets or things like that, we can work on that as well. Um, so just kind of back to normal, really fast, um, park reservations, community, um, skipping on the group picnic areas that they like to reserve.
So, I got a question, I'm sorry, is, and then, I know it's Greenhorn that we do the park reservations, or what other parks do we, we do a minor?
What about, um, Minor Street Park?
I don't know, I was wondering.
In terms of, of reservation?
Reservation, yeah.
Probably only sports, I would say.
I think people just use the park when they want to.
Is Matt unmuted?
Yeah, I should be, can you hear me?
I can hear you, man.
Okay, so correct, we have reservable areas at Upper Greenhorn Park, Lower Greenhorn Park, and Minor Street Park. And those are posted the day or a couple of days before the reservation.
Great, thank you. I'm sorry, Reddick, I'm just, I just want to clarify that.
So can I ask, maybe Reddick or Steve or, or Matt or maybe one of the council? Um, like last Sunday, Sunday was getting used like crazy.
Yeah.
One day, there were three birthday parties in three different parts of Upper Greenhorn Park. I've been assumed that they weren't reserved. And I know that there's been a question of trash being left. And that's been a concern of citizens that they've brought to the city and council.
Right.
Um, so how does this, I mean, I want to, we're gonna do this, but how does that really avoid that? Because you were doing it already. How does it, how does, do we keep your deposit then, or?
So when they come in, we make the reservation, they still have a part reservation form. We do this form of, um, on the little form and kind of define grant, but we're gonna add, you know, the reservation net. Expectations, if it's only twenty five that you bring in your, you know, the kind of like, um, haul out your trash. You're gonna bring your containers and haul out the trash along that, just according to the park, municipal codes on that.
At twenty five, you said?
Twenty five.
Okay, yeah, these were all like eight or ten people, no more.
Yeah, but they, but they still should be cleaning up their, you know.
In a perfect world.
Twenty five dollars is what it's always been, so you're going back to that. Yeah.
And they've been only have twenty five people, is that what it's?
No, they have twenty five or more, they, they bring in their, um, they need to bring in their trash bags and haul out their trash. So they just don't leave, you know, for the next party, just cleaning out the trash bag. It happens, um, Matt and Chris probably tested it more on that. So, you know, just like kind of everything, there's those that, you know, just wipe everything down before they leave and then they're so, so just like, they'll trash.
In a perfect world. Yeah, I'm not, no, I'm not getting that.
And then, um, the parking equipment, we weren't too worried about that. Um, the type of people, like when they make the reservation, when they sweep out little volleyball kits and things like that, the big play equipment. So I'm not too worried about contact on that. I mean, we just kind of like wipe it down, wipe it down and then, you know, pick up time, just go ahead and let it happen.
Yeah.
I think that's probably. So, um, recommendation of that, the staff is through, recommend that we go back to accepting reservations in the front. Um, and, uh, fill out that, work for that, follow the guidelines, um, and give the information, um, to publishers, to folks. And there should be giving some park help here, um, within the park season, so.
Good. I did a two click text because there was an end of a bench with a giant hole in it.
Okay.
Uh, and it looked like, I mean, I, I felt like somebody took a shirt off.
Uh huh.
I guess it was on at lower part. I took a picture of it, two click text, I tried it.
Um, any questions on that, Matt, anything else you want to raise on that?
No, I think that covers it, you know, the, the trash left behind is always been an occasional issue. Some folk come in there without reservations and leave their trash, but it's not a normal thing. So, and I, I didn't, I wasn't able to see what happened a few weeks ago. But, um, you know, I, I was in the parks for a number of years, it, uh, it happened occasionally, but it's not a regular thing.
So the other facility we wanted to discuss was the community center, um, taking reservations on that for them. So Madron is continuing to prepare military seniors, they are not doing that in Congrat or the, in, in the center dining. I didn't get chips to call them before the meeting and kind of find out, you know, what, what their horizon would be like. But, um, as it, they were also working with, um, the public health use, utilize their, um, facility and safe vaccination locations during their third hour, um, for that on weekdays. And the deposit, we didn't call and check in on how that was going and whether that is justified. Um, when we talked, when we kind of were gathering information for, I believe it was beginning of February, when kind of first brought this up, um, the Madron was, um, this may, was concerned about building youth. And, um, what they need to do is bring it to the standard. So we do have some cleaning kind of protocols that, um, will need to follow for that. So, um, and looking at the blueprint for a safer economy and, um, Sage is a deep dive on it, so we need, um, to go back. But, um, and identifying that the community center, um, and theater, um, kind of look like they fall into the venues are gatherings for musical, theatrical, and artistic performances. And that you can't have gatherings socially distant, um, in the, um, there's no succeeding in the, in the center. So the other thing is we kind of put all our park attendants, um, you know, basically canceled all the events. And just kind of for a while, we didn't know how long, so we're just kind of like canceling them on a rolling calendar. Um, and it never really got better. So they have not been, um, we probably have lost part of our park attendants, that part of being able to pull it back. So those that come back will have to go through some training, additional training. Um, they have to go through the, and the, the rough training as well as the COVID training and things like that. Um, and then if, uh, within the district college guidelines, is, um, they would require testing. So we're gonna have to figure out what that would look like. Assuming they have more bigger staffing that would go into regular intervals of testing. These, um, protocols for frequency, so if it might be called. And coordinating that with, um, so they, their public health, I'm not quite sure how that would be. But again, you know, when you get together and you get hired, we all know that. So we just need to get these people located in, um, or door, we want higher to train. Um, and then we need to follow the guideline of that. And we kind of outlined of that, um, what would be most for us is the capacity, um, of that, um, orange facility. And so right now, we're in the orange, if we went to the yellow, um, maximum of twenty five percent or, um, three hundred people, as we kind of move on into the yellow. We haven't really gotten into the deep dive on all of this. So if we do, I'm recommending maybe giving us a couple of months to get this sorted out. So maybe taking reservations after the first of July, or, or, as far as, um, scheduling this. We could take reservations now, but that would be the first of July.
Reservations for the parks or for?
No, for the community, community center. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I just, not scheduling them to.
Till after July, after July sixth is what you have down on here, so.
Probably got a little bit of light working.
Yeah. Right, have to use the.
And I'm gonna need to probably find somebody to clean and figure out, because their parks will be for cleaning to that group for it. So, um, and then what happens if, you know, they kind of go wild? You know, what's, what is our role at that point of the, the, in that, you know, if they're not calling, um?
Guidelines of the county and state.
So, um, you know, I guess the, there's kind of the group risk, you know, as they're congregating. But then you also, you know, you've got employees that you're asking to be, you know, they're also in fight with that. So I, you know, though, I think hopefully people will do the right thing, but there's always overlap. So I'm not quite sure what that's going to be like when we encounter it.
Well, I like, I like what you're, what you said, you know, just, we can start taking reservations now. But after July sixth, like you have down here, then we could be able to administer that. But that gives, like you said, staff and, and everybody a time to figure this out, uh, where we, you know, what direction. And also will give us time to figure out where we're, we're gonna be as, as a, as a county and as a city and everything else on this whole COVID thing. We might be, we might be out of it completely, who knows? I doubt it, but it sounds good, I would hope and pray, but.
Well, the governor's saying it, well, shouldn't you?
Yeah.
Reopen.
Yeah, in June, I think there's.
Also, remember the C D C decreased cleaning guidelines, they said it's nowhere here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's like one in ten thousand, as far as contact goes, you're, you're very, you're highly likely to get it.
Yeah.
All the stuff they said about how to clean and do stuff, just, just be careful.
Yeah.
Be normally.
So I, I just wanted to, the rules are, are, are moving, but they're not the same for every program.
Right.
For example, even with C D C guidelines like that, the program that Madron operates under.
It's different.
They have something different.
Yeah.
We ran across a situation where the C D C guidelines would say, okay, these people are fully vaccinated, no problem. But the Cal OSHA rules mean that they have to stay home if they have certain symptoms, which is not intuitive at all. But, you know, things aren't moving, I'm not sure if the right word is, they're not moving lockstep, they're not, but they're kind of sort of stutter start. So there's gonna be some interesting.
Yeah, it's gonna be really interesting.
My place, and then the second part, I think, really is gonna be finding intermittent part-time people that want to have.
That's, that's the challenge, I think, more than anything.
The other thing is that they kind of, a lot of these part timers were, um, are you not making a figure? A lot of these part timers were doing other part-time things. So then you stop, you're competing against the system of employment, and, and passing the test. So, um, you know, it might be kind of hard to pull them in, starting in, um, September, when everything runs out.
Yeah. Well, I think as far as. Well, I think as far as, uh, reservations for the community center, most of that, other than Madron, I think most of that falls later in the year anyways, most of the time, other than big events, if somebody has a, a, a wedding reception or whatever that may be.
We're remembering that right now, it would be, um, seventy five people in there.
Right, would be all.
So we're not necessarily gonna get the big.
No.
I, I just don't think people are doing that.
Right.
It's been a year then.
What's that?
Since a year.
Yeah.
Yes.
True.
Mr. Mayor and fellow councilmen and Mr. Baker, city manager, this is Paul McCoy. I would like to make a recommendation that we, I would like to break this up into three separate motions.
Okay.
I would like A, B, and C to be separate motion, if, if we could, if there's consensus for that, and I'd like to make a motion on A.
All right, I'm fine with that, as rest of council fine with it.
Why do you want them separate? Yeah, I wanna, I want, I have some comments on A.
Well, you can, you can do the comment, you.
He's just, he's just asking right now to break them up. Break them up right now.
That's all I'm asking.
Oh, okay. So park reservations, what do you think?
Yeah, I'm just asking if, if, if we get consensus to break them up, we can, then we vote on them together.
I just wondered if you had a strategy behind that, yeah, okay.
We know we're okay with the park.
I think one of them is gonna pass quicker than the other two. I think two of them are gonna take some, uh, some, some chatting tonight. And I think C is gonna take not only chatting, but, um, I think we're gonna need some direction. We're gonna need to give some direction to our public works director through the city manager. And we're gonna have to get some direction back from that person. I'd like to set a timeline on that, that we get it back from public works.
Gotcha, gotcha.
So that's, that, that would be my reason for, that's the only reason. And I can go either way, but I'm just, I'm proposing that, I'll leave it on the table.
That's. I'm, I'm. I'm, I, okay, so we have a consensus and we'll split this up into six A, B, and C, is that's correct, the council?
Yes.
Okay, great.
And I know this, uh, council, uh, member, uh, Smith Freeman has questions, so.
Yes.
I have, I just, um, have, I do have a question, and it's not necessarily about the, the problems. It's, I'm, I think that we're ready to go out for people to reserve spaces at the park, I don't have a problem with it. But I know that a lot of this, you know, is back to our park folks. And my question is, and I know there are park folks that are currently, you know, leaving in about five weeks. And I want to know, I know that people have a pride. And within a five to three period of time, people have to make plans, and I'm wondering where we are with that.
It's close to fifty, and there are.
Twentieth, okay.
The fifty, or the twentieth.
There's three sets, a couple and two singles, I think.
Um, I believe, actually, there may be one more.
Correct. We have a.
Yes, ma'am.
This is Matt, we have, uh, applicants, we have a couple and three single applicants.
Okay.
And have you made a decision?
No. We have not moved forward to the interviewing process yet, at this time.
Are you concerned with missing the window of opportunity because, um, seasonal park?
Are you concerned with missing the window of opportunity because seasonal park hosts set up early and they might move on to another location?
That is always a concern when we're trying to fill this position. I believe this is the most interest we have had yet for the season, and I think the timing's still okay to accomplish the interview process and get through and rate and make a decision.
Is the compensation for a couple going to be same as it is for a couple that's right now?
The competition for any position in Public Works is the identical series of questions. And then the panel, we typically assemble a panel of three, the five folks, this would probably be a three-person panel. And we interview all applicants that we feel are up for the job and rate them and hire the best fit for the organization.
Let me rephrase a question to you, Matt. Will the compensation be allocated to a couple who is working as a park host in the Greenhorn Park?
Yeah, compensation, if, if there are two co-applicants, our program is in place to compensate each person of applicant comes out on top, then it would be the single, at the single rate.
Was your question, is it the same as now?
Yeah, that's my question. Second question, how did the panel, or how did, and we're putting together this position, how was that discrepancy between a single and couple arrived at, that a couple would be paid double X while a single only gets X? When they're all working the same amount of hours, the couple theoretically is working the same amount of hours as a single?
Actually, I believe that was a council decision at the time when we had our first couple apply as co-applicants. And at the time, the discussion centered around, we would ask each person to work the same amount of hours. So if a couple is on site, we're expecting four hours each, so eight hours a day over the course of the day. And if it's a single, we only have the four hours of work being accomplished.
So at that time, the council's perception of two people working is that two people would be working double the hours? Which is not necessarily the perception of couples that work out, but that's what I, I just wanna cover that. I would, I would like to see that brought back, I would like to see the minutes brought back from that, the meetings, then where that took place, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I would like to see what the discussion was, and I'd like to see that put back on for further discussion, not
No, and I, and I agree, it should be
for further discussion, because I, there's so much going on out there, and I'm approached so often about it, like, that I just, you know, it's, it's, it's just, it's a whole lot of
So
talky, talky, talky for, you know.
So, yes, I agree, 'cause not only that, neither one of you were on the council when we decided this, correct? So I think that would be good to be, bring it back to, so everybody could review that as far as that goes. Um, Jones, if
Well, and then for those, the two council members that were not on the council when that happened, it was a totally different situation. Two totally different people that were not a couple. There were two separate people in two separate
Right.
places where they lived and they each returned. So, yeah, it was, it was different.
A different scenario.
But the understanding is, right, that if each of them are paid, each of them will work the four hours.
But currently, again, and this is just my understanding from being here, 'cause I see nothing written about it in anything I've read. Currently, we are not hiring two separate individuals who are not a, a couple or married or spousal cohabitants current, uh, to work out there. Is that, is that correct, Matt?
One couple has applied.
Yeah.
Only one.
Not, not what I'm asking.
I, I know.
Can you hear me?
Can I parse that a little bit?
Can Matt hear us?
Yes, yes, I can.
Okay, okay, go ahead.
So I'm, I'm gonna change gears here. We're, this is not what this, what this is about, this.
Well, she, she
And I understand
She's been talking about it, so I'm trying to get
And I think we need, I now I think we need to bring it back, but this is not what we're bringing back on the count, on the agenda tonight. The, the agenda tonight is, let me re, re, reread this.
Number six.
It's number six.
A.
Thank you, let me bring it back up here. Six A, discuss impossible action reopening the city recreational and community services that include park reservations, community center reservations, and community theater reservations. So, and I understand where this is going with, and I, I totally agree that we need to re, re, bring this back in and
Yeah, I'm just asking you, Mr. Mayor, to put it past
Yes, and I agree, and I say, and I say, I think we have agreeance with the rest of council that we need to bring this back. Okay, so I think at this time, we need to move forward on number six, A, B, and C, that's presented to us, and go forward with that.
Did you wanna recount on C, on the theater?
Yes, please.
Um, so on the community theater, this is, this is a recommendation is that we not reopen it until we, you guys, we've H vaced on that facility. So, and so you can consider that recommendation on, on, you know, to bring something back on that, which I think you already alluded to. On that, and then just one quick question is, though we're not actively recruiting for two separate non-related parties as post-park hosts.
What, I'm, I couldn't hear origin.
We are not actively recruiting for two unrelated parties or park host positions. It could be a single or a couple, but not two non-related
Gotcha.
Couple meaning married, spousal inhabitant or, um?
That would be permissible, yeah. Uh, not two random people, you know, like, oh, you came from North Carolina, and you came from Seattle.
And I, and I can discuss later, I, I, I'm just curious as to how it came about these distinctions, where the, where, where the foundation came? Why we would pick a couple over a single, or we pick a single over a couple, you know, so.
And, and just a
Yeah, that doesn't even
I, I wanna take the negative spin off of it, and I want, I would like to say that this program that we have, with a park host and having someone there, probably, I guess, the most compliment of any, I'm, I'm sorry, Matt. But from anything that the city does and do, is that the public is well aware, they like the fact that there's somebody there, it makes them feel safer, it makes the park cleaner. It's a good program, I think, in my opinion, and, and I, I want to see it go forward. Now, I know that there are others that don't agree with that, but I heartily, heartily, I mean, we've been on the council, we, we went through everything that we had
Oh, yeah.
to get this established, and I do not want to do anything that would undermine this program.
No.
And, and Joan, I don't disagree with you, but unlike you, what I get are the negative comments, and it's a constant, you know, well, why, why doesn't the city do this? Why don't they do that? And, and the thing is, I don't wanna undermine it either, but I don't wanna pay for a program. If it comes to the point where, where the money that we're spending on a program is, could be used somewhere else in the same program there at, at Parks and Rec? Then we have to, as, as, as good stewards of our taxpayer money, we, our tax, our taxpayers' money, we have to go get where we're spending that money. And I don't wanna, I, I don't wanna get rid of, but I see a tremendous amount of flaws. And a quote, you know, Steve and I talked, we spent an inordinate amount of time on this, you would, you know, Steve talked about, you would think this is the only thing that's on our plate. And you know what, to me, this program should work flawlessly, and it just does.
Right, and that's why, that's why we
Every, every time I'm out at the park, every time, it's either from a citizen or it's from a park host, it's one or the other.
Yep.
We, we have, we have a cart out there right now, an electric cart that is not running, has not run.
Yeah, it is, I thought
No, 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 it's not, I talked tomorrow this week.
Okay, let's, we're gonna, we're gonna go a different direction, people, so if it be a future debate, this will be a future, I, we're, we're done. We're done, we're gonna, we're gonna move on, and
I'll make the motion to approve A, A, the park reservation, uh, park reservation recommendation to accept reservations for the group picnic sites, again, with updated reservation form, never reference the COVID guidelines, and additional emphasis event organizers responsibly for the site cleanup, park use, and littering regulations.
Okay.
I'm Middleton, all second.
All righty, so we have motion and a second on that. I guess we'll do individual roll calls on that then, too, Steve, so would you please do a roll call?
Sure, Mayor, President Barry?
Aye.
City Councilmember Freeman?
Aye.
City Councilmember McCoy?
Aye.
City Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Mayor Kay.
Aye, all righty, now let's go to six B, which is the community center.
So that's just a little more complicated, so could you go over what it is that you're recommending for this portion?
That we could start accepting reservations for events after July, this
In the year
in the community center. Before we can do that, I do need to circle back with the drones and our part-time attendance.
Okay.
That's, at least, we've got a couple that will come back.
So basically, this recommendation, it's gonna buy them some time to clear up some of this, Joan, is what it amounts to. So, I know we, we'd like to move forward a little bit faster on it, I, I know we definitely do, and there's no dip sands or buts, but I think, I, I think that we need to give them a little bit more time just to clear it up. That's, that's not, that's just my opinion.
But we should know by next council meeting, right? They'll follow up with it.
You know, that they may wanna change where, I'm not sure if they're doing that, whether they're hosting it, or if they're kind of finished with that, I'm not sure.
I don't think they could, it's been out of their ground.
I'm not sure if they need momentum, and then I'm not sure where they might be on their program reopening, I'm guessing they probably are reopening, so they're digging into the higher level area of, of their population.
Even though where they are.
Well, for the seniors, the high-risk
Yeah, that's true.
Hey, that's all of us almost.
The high-risk category now in the U.S. is thirty to fifty-nine, that's the high risk.
True.
And they're dying twice as fast as they did three months ago.
Wow.
Worldwide, and we're, and we're, we're dying at a faster rate than we were during the first million.
Right, the new strain, the, the, the strain from, uh, Sputnik.
I think everybody's cautious, because we've been the old, what did we call the old folks, those in the eighties and old.
So can you clarify something for the council? I, I, I think I know what you mean, but I wanna make sure we're all going on the same thing, that you're recommending accepting reservations now, not after the six, or now, or after.
Or it is after.
Correct.
Yeah, so I, I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I, I
I think it's a good idea.
Do you, Joan, do you wanna have the first part?
Um, I wanna have it in June.
Would you?
Yeah.
Would you rather table this till you speak with the drone?
Probably a good idea.
We talked to him in February, they were willing to work with us at that point, so, um, I think we just kind of, or continue that dialogue.
Yeah, but, but if we're still having dialogue, then you probably don't need to set a date, right?
No, they knew, they weren't quite ready to open in February, but that's when we were still in the purple, when we talked to them. 'Cause we brought the U.S. independent spring back, see how the facilities would open. So we talked to them, and that, at that time, we were still in purple, they were good turn, or no longer purple, we're, we're orange tone, or maybe yellow.
Orange, they're orange, and
It will probably go lower.
Yep.
It will go lower, so I, I think they'll be fine with that, and even in the purple, they were saying, you know, we'll work with you on that, um,
It's two months away.
Hold up, really, isn't it?
No, I gotta find
The gap.
It's, we're really, uh, hiring, because even on summer part-time, um, where we live on seasonal help, but even though they're working a full eight-hour day, they're making our, um, we continue to hear, they're making more of them than than coming and working for us for a, a season. They've gotta hire like somebody that's kind of in a gap condition, either wasn't working before, so not fully unemployed like the high school that's a little older, maybe.
That's gonna be ending anyway, yeah. Well, then, okay. Have we got clarification on that, council?
I'm trying to try to get it pulled together.
No.
No?
Oh, well, I mean, I
I'm trying to, yeah, I think we've got a little bit of work by people, we know two of them are around. We know two, um, one is gone and one is unknown.
I wanna make sure that I understand, there's, there's really two, our recommendation is to go ahead with, um, taking with the policy here to where we start now. There's some things we need to check out, so now may not be on our morning, I didn't do that.
I'm trying.
They need names.
Marking spiders.
Marking spiders means something else.
Yeah, so, so, um, so we, if you're comfortable with, with going this way, I think we can work with it. The other alternative sounds like, hey, there's someone now and still, maybe, maybe we should find out whether we can get employees, although I think it's gonna be better, easier to get employees back if we say
We have it.
the pool has said, you know, okay, start after July.
I agree, I agree, yeah.
And we may come back to say, uh, no, uh, find a work.
Yeah, and it might change, we might have to just totally, yeah, do something different.
We think they can be successful, we have a thousand employees, we can sure we get, got that.
Well, and you're checking out my deal, right?
Yeah.
Everybody says this is a town having a hard time hiring because the unemployment's so good.
It is.
They're not able to hire, I think Walmart's just short of a hundred employees.
Yeah.
Oh, gosh.
Wow.
Rayne, who's unique, just having trouble getting employees, and they're
Yeah, it's crazy, so I'll, I'll go for it, I was just gonna do it, so.
I would like to make a motion, um, to accept reservations now for the community center for events on or after July sixth, twenty-twenty-one. This allows administrative staff time to recruit and train attendance, weekly testing protocol, coordination with Madrone, and protocols for facility cleaning, and development of cleaning surcharges to event organizers. I'll second that.
I think he's gotta give that to anyone.
No.
I didn't, I didn't hear that, please repeat.
Every time I take a breath, it sucks right into my mouth.
I suck it in.
Oh, good, I, I got that, you don't, you don't, you need to repeat it still. So we have a motion and a second, would you do a roll call, please, this time?
What you said, yeah.
Mayor, President Barry?
Aye.
City Councilmember Freeman?
Aye.
City Councilmember McCoy?
Aye.
City Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Mayor Kay.
Aye, all right, now we're moving on to six C, and that's the community theater recommendation, so. That's a tough
May I throw something out there?
Yes, please. As long as you have, as long as you don't hit one of us.
I took like, I didn't have it before, I think I'll Um, we've been talking about HVAC as long as I've been on here.
Uh-huh.
Yep.
Um, you know what, it's only gonna get more expensive.
Oh, yeah.
We need to find the money to do it, I think, of what, what I, what I would ask is that we ask the City Manager to work with Public Works and have Public Works and the City Manager bring back to our June first meeting bids, or, not, maybe not bids, prices that we've gotten on this app. And then we, and then we proceed to go out to bid and get it done, 'cause the longer we let it go, we might as well just take a wrecking ball to the building.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Well, yeah.
So we do have just, I don't, I think that, I think the council's aware of, we do have a temporary heating system there, I don't know, is everybody familiar with that? Huh, it's in the parking lot, it's on the, yeah, it's on the, yeah, it's on the west, north side, yeah, west north.
But respectfully, Mr. Mayor, they're requesting reservation theater none until the HVAC system is replaced.
Right.
That says it all right there.
Right.
Yeah, so
So request, respectfully, I say that.
Right, right, no, I, so, yes, whoever, what comment from that?
No, I, I agree totally, we gotta move forward of this building.
Right.
Okay.
Right, and, and, you know, I just wanna say that this building is, there are other cities within our county that would love to have
Oh, yeah.
community theater like we've got, we're so fortunate to have it, and, and I think that we've got to stop letting it go and fix it.
Okay, I agree.
Rest assured, that once we fix this, there will be other things that have to be fixed.
Oh, yeah.
This is just a, this is probably just like the water, holding the water out from the Ziner's E.
Right.
You know, and, but, I mean, I just feel like we owe it, you know, it's a lot of money, and I know that, you know, that, that fiscally, the, um, but it's money that should go to, to fix something that this community has used that for so, I mean, I've seen Anthony Zerbi there, I've seen Michael Murphy there, I've seen the, the Met Twins, our boys, I mean, I see, I mean, they've had some large names, but they've had some Our boys, I mean, I see, I mean, they, they've had some large names, but they've had some huge.
Yep.
Uh, conscious series up there, so, you know.
So, with clarification then, to, by June, the first June meeting, which we don't have, but we see.
June one.
I think it is June first.
Is it June, okay.
I'm not asking for, I, they were, there were bids, I think, though, they can do a serious job of digging into it, figure out, they can get people out there, have them take a look at it, figure out about what's gonna cost.
And they're, and they're funding for the art out there.
Yeah.
They just, you know what, it just, it's gotta get done, we, you know, we can.
Okay, so we got, do you have dr- oops, direction there, Steve, from?
Well, I'm giving you, I'm giving you direction, I don't know.
No, I said, I'm giving him, he just has clarification.
I noticed in the past, we've done a cost estimate.
Right.
Um, through pace, as was pointed out, that cost estimate is full, I don't exactly.
So we, do we have to go through pace to get an estimate on this, this is, I don't see where we need to go through an engineering outfit to get a, a, where we're just spending more money.
We have, right, we have spec.
We have what?
We have engineering spec.
Okay. Gotcha.
They may have to be updated.
Yeah, they may have to be updated, so, what I'm hearing is that you would like us to move forward with whatever next step.
Would be?
Will get you to where we wanna go, now that next, I, I need to talk to, um, Matt, talk to the Public Works, and find out what that next step is.
Okay.
Um, I think you're right, that we probably won't, we only have this done by, by June one.
I'm sure you can, yeah.
Yeah, but we might be able to put it out to bid by then, and if that is okay, as far, what, what I'm understanding is, let's, let's move forward and figure out what it is, I just wanna make sure.
Sure, yes, so, well, well, there's only gonna be one, though, there's four bids, or three bids, and only one we're gonna fix, so, that also gives us time for finance committee.
Yep.
Together, Joan, I, and Reddick, and you, to figure out, uh, where, where, where partial all money's.
Yep.
Because then, if we, if we don't get a grant, we're gonna run Peter's name off.
Okay, I'm not sure about the poll, but.
Yeah, you might, you might wanna leave that part out. That kinda sounds a little weird, there, Paul. It's probably shouldn't have been phrased as city council meeting, but.
I'm sorry.
All right, let me, uh, what, so what I'll do is, is, uh, is that sort of a consensus direction?
I think so, do we have consensus yet, okay.
Okay, and we'll try to come back with, with, how do we move forward on that.
So, as far as six C, do, is this something that we want to, um, not proceed forward at this point in time and, and table it till we have this numbers?
My recommendation would be wait for a June first meeting.
That's what I'm recommending here.
And after that, have, uh, then we would give direction to.
Yes.
Uh, city manager, and when we wanted it back on the agenda, cause then, they've got a lot more work to do.
So we may.
And we are going into, if you're in Southern California, we're going into the busy season.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, up here, I think they're busy all year round.
Yeah.
But, you know, you're heat and air.
Oh, right, oh, yeah, definitely, oh, definitely.
So.
So this, basically then, the recommendation for six C is to not, yeah, basically table it, we're not gonna do, take any, um, reservations at this point in time, is this correct?
Correct.
Do we need a motion on that one, Mr. Baker?
We need a motion, it, it's a recommendation, so we're not recommending reservations, uh, yes, we could disable it and then.
I'd say just.
Ask for the, um, information that Paul recommended to come back to the committee and do.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so we're table on six C then, okay.
All right, we'll just do that by consent.
Yes.
We'll do it by consent.
Correct, okay, awesome, so now we are on to the, the big one, it's gonna take a lot of time, discussion possible action, continuation of the urgency ordinance number eight fifty-five.
We're doing better, we're still in the emergency, we recommend continuation.
This is Councilman McCoy, I'll make the motion to, uh, for, uh, the action of continuation of urgency order number eight fifty-five, as presented by the mayor and the city manager. It's just something that we, right now, we've done as a condition of safety for, uh, our, 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 uh, citizens and ourselves, uh, for the city, so I'm gonna make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second.
Tom Middleton, all second.
All right. All right, we have a motion and a second, Mr. Baker, please.
Mayor President Barrett.
Hi.
City Councilmember Freeman.
Aye.
City Councilmember McCoy.
Aye.
City Councilmember Middleton.
Aye.
Mayor Kenny.
Aye, all right, motion carried again, so we're good to go, so now we're moving into city manager staff reports, you're going into cor- quarterly reports first, Mr. Baker, is that what we're doing?
Yeah, um, so what you have is, uh, we talked about putting together some quarterly reports for you, so that you would be able to have a little better idea what's going on, uh, comprehensively, normally, we do it on a one, one project at a time kind of basis, so what would be in your selection from each of the departments? And what I asked them to be ready to do tonight is to present one or two highlights, uh, within their area, and then if you have questions, uh, to, to, uh, ask those questions, and then we know that there will be some questions where we will need to get back to with information, uh, if you're, if you're, you know, if it's a question where you need some information, we might do it by email, but anyway.
No, I think that's a good way, especially as late as this meeting's going, I think we keep it as simple as possible, um.
Did you want the highlights, given, given the way that they are, do you want the highlights?
Um. I mean, huh?
We're gonna be here longer, though, we're gonna.
Oh, yeah, we, we're definitely gonna have some more conversations, do we want, we would like to hit, I guess since we have some of them here, I would like to hear from.
So let's, yeah, let's go ahead, yeah, who, who would like to go first?
Go to reports, though, guys, go to reports and get the numbers and stuff. I mean, it's not that it's all good news, but good to know.
Chief, chief of the box is like, I'll go first, I'm gonna get out of here.
He's running down.
I'm gonna get this done, then I can let you guys get on and close session and whatnot, so, um, I'm, I'm not gonna go over the four pages of information that I put out, but I would like to address a couple of, uh, interesting facts that will lead into the report. So, um, tonight, there's gonna be a question about, uh, crime statistics, and there's an interesting phenomenon, or interesting, uh, change that's happening in California nationwide. We used to report, um, crimes on something called UCR, UC, Uniform Crime Report, that's all part of crimes, major crimes that usually send people to state prison. FBI, Department of Justice said, we're going away from uniform crime reports, we're going to something called NIR's National Incident Based Reporting System, just a different way of collecting statistics. They told California, California being, California said, we want our own, we wanna be special for the union, so we only, we not only want National Incident, uh, Based Reporting System, we want a California National Incident Based System, so, it's kind of difficult to say how you parse out crimes and what they are, but, um, they put a deadline, California always likes to put a deadline, it's gonna be ready by January first, twenty twenty-one. The IT folks that run our, our computer aided dispatch system are like, oh, my God, we have to write computer programming to fit what California wants, right? And California likes to always put this hard deadline, and everybody will be ready by this time, so of course, we need the deadline, and there's no way our system can report to California what they're asking for, so we went to a big meeting at Department of Justice in Sacramento, and we said, what do we do? And a lot of chiefs in a lot bigger agencies than mine said, well, you know, what we'd like to do, since we're not ready, is, um, we'd like to just keep reporting UCR, or hand doing NIR's until it's ready. And this is where we are getting a conflict in crime stats, so a lot of crimes that were felonies, when all of us remember they were felonies, um, commercial burglaries, drugs, cultivation of marijuana, things like that, they've dropped to misdemeanors, and I'm not blaming other law enforcement professionals, but they are using that to say, crime has gone down. Crime is gone, folks, our crime stats are gone, the crimes are still being committed, I'm gonna be honest with you, every crime that they're seeing is not being committed, is still being committed today, the same crimes are happening, it's just that larger agencies are choosing not to report those crimes, because they don't have to. Um, I am compelled to be honest with our citizens, whether they're a misdemeanor or felony, they're still a crime, they're still getting reported, so, to Lorenzo's point, it, that you can look and you can see, and these crime stats are higher, it's because of, like I said, I feel compelled to be honest, and say that those crime stats, I could pull out smoke and mirrors, and say, well, technically, they're misdemeanors, so I don't really have to report them, and I could drive our crime stats down by fifty percent. But is it really down? No, no, and it, I cannot look these folks in the face in our town and say, oh, crime's gone down, cause they know better.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So, um, I guess you could say partly it's not my fault for being honest and telling what really happens, that kind of goes, uh, a small segue into, um, my, my annual report, my quarterly report. You see where I've caught, I've talked about, you know, robbery with firearms, force, knives, uh, felony assaults with swords, and firearms, and wrenches, causing great bodily injury, and, you know, and then, and highlighted in red, I put how many suspects were in custody, so, out of those, uh, crimes, um, we have twelve, took twelve into custody, and these are major felonies that would have normally gone to state prison. So far, since, uh, I've written this report, twelve were in custody at the time that I wrote this report, uh, April first, and since then, uh, only two are still in custody, ten are, have been released from custody, and two of the ten have reoffended with the exact same crime and have gone back into custody. So for us, it is an every single day file of the same suspect, burglarizing, assaulting, or doing something else that we take to jail, they go in, they see the judge, or, or whatever process the jail releases them by, they're back out, and they commit the same crime, because they know that they're misdemeanors and there's gonna be no consequences.
Wow.
On top of that.
Great.
To go to. Are diving crime rates, which is not true, uh, High Desert State Prison, a twenty-four hundred bed prison is closing.
Closing, I know, that's scary.
They're closing it because it's empty now, yeah.
Susanville, yep.
So we have a supermax prison that used to hold between twenty-four hundred and thirty-four hundred, depending on how were, they were, we, as Wariqua, had dozens of people in that supermax that are now back here.
Yep.
Wow.
Um, because their crimes are no longer considered felonies, they're back here, there are no misdemeanors in our county jail, only bones. Okay, so, a lot of the, the, um, upsetness and the, the frustration over crime are the misdemeanors, and misdemeanors, as we know, are the quality of life crimes that affect us. There are the noises next door, the, the dogs, the, the junk cars out in front, the assault and batteries that occur downtown, these are the things that really bug us the most, and they're not in custody, folks, we take them to custody every day, and they are removed from custody, they're, they're released, um.
Is that, do you, do you have, uh, does that impact how many they can keep in the jail?
Yes, ma'am. It does, um, so the jail has reduced the amount of beds, spread them out, um, and opted for early release, uh, state prisons have done the same thing. So I get a report every month now on early releases from state prison, and then, of course, the district attorney and I talk at length about people that they're letting out of county jail, and I'm telling you, these folks are not nice people, you know, and they will reoffend, I mean, one guy reoffended twice the same day, after he was released, so, um, very difficult, um, just on, a, a totally side note, um, I was working with Jerry, uh, with some fire stats for, um, ISO, and these are my stats, you know, and a lot of folks can say, well, the police have stats, and they report this or that, maybe, you know, whatever we, however we want to massage a stat, a statistic, and like I said, other agencies will say that there's no crime, I can't, I can't look people in the eye and say that, but I do have some statistics, very, very briefly, that are phone calls, these are our phone records, they come in.
Crazy.
Um, last year, we handled four thousand seven hundred eighty-four nine-one-ones. And twenty-five thousand business line phone calls.
Wow.
You know, so for, for one dispatch center and a few business line offices, we're at thirty-plus thousand phone calls a year. Um, just as an idea, these are, these are AT&T's stats, these are not mine, these are just phone counts, but, um, I, I encourage you to look through the, the cases that I've cited, and that we, we are having great success in these major cases, and getting people in the custody task, um, we just aren't having great success keeping them in custody, so, any questions?
Council on some questions, comments?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you for all the info.
Creative thinking, thank you so much.
I think that, I said one comment, I was trying to see that you were mentioning that Sergeant Cook, uh, at last, to go to the E D A, and I was like.
Thank you.
So was why.
Oh, I know, I was like, oh.
That was twenty some days.
Twenty-nine days.
From a change.
Yeah, I called, uh, the post, the peace officer standard training, that regulates how we bring people back.
Yeah.
I said, do, do we, do we have to do anything with a guy that's been gone twenty-nine days, and he's like, we'll take a longer vacation. So, uh, HR, uh, had, it's city hall here, really helped us out with bringing him back on.
Good.
Very quickly, and brought us twelve back to thirteen.
Good.
So.
Good, good, good.
Anyway, I appreciate all the.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Did we wake, did we wake you up? Did we wake you up? Oh, mine too. My, my.
Put a Greek zerk in it.
Um, yeah, if, if you have time to read through the quarterly reports, I'm sure you have, I don't really have, I didn't, I just picked the ones that I think were, um, most notable, and I would say that, um, for, something that's been needed for a long time was the, uh, initiation of the, the new fire station project, so I'm very proud of that, the fact that it's gone from, you know, basically, you know, nothing to where it's at now, that's, that's huge, and I look for good things, you know, going forward, and the fact that we have a, for me, a major league consultant is gonna really pay off, pay dividends, you know, through the process, so, really excited about that, and I think secondly is, um, for me, is making sure that we continue this process of recruitment and getting quality firefighters back in the department, just like, I'm really glad to hear that Sergeant Cook's coming back, that, like, Robert Doynich for us is a Sergeant Cook, so, you know, we're getting some other good folks too, I'm young man today, where he's probably gonna be coming, you know, bringing his application in, and he's, I'm just a senior in high school, but he's eighteen, so we're excited about that, um, you know, the sleep.
Nice, yeah.
Having those young men, you know, there every day, running tall at night, and, you know, it's, I'm sure it's tiresome for them, because now they're coming through their, uh, their testing, so they're, they're pretty tired, so I say, well, young men, this is your, this is gonna be your career, so, getting woke up and all, all out at night, so, um, other than that, I wanna say one thing, and that's, um, Y P D, they do a great job, we work with them all the time, um, you probably know that, but traffic collisions, uh, medicals, pretty much anything, I've known most of them all my tenure as fire department member for Wariqua, I get choked up, I'm just. So, but, you know, I want you guys to know that they're, they're appreciative of us.
Good.
Sure.
Good to know.
Is there any questions? Oh, one more thing with the, uh, the, the new apparatus, and that's something that I will, if you guys all, I'll send you the link, and you can check on there, there's a photo. The water, yeah, it's the, the photo progress reports from the manufacturer.
Oh, cool.
That way you guys can kind of see.
Yeah, that'd be cool.
That would be great, that'd be wonderful, yeah.
Yeah, that'd be cool. Yeah, that would be neat.
With that, we'll conclude my report, and if you have some questions.
Do you have any questions, comments? Thank you, thank you so much.
Oh, well, did you get a utility bill? Did you get a little bit excited, so, yeah, so, a lot of the, um, assignments and operations, but I do wanna call out, um, contributions of H R, um, it's been kind of a, a long year for a lot of people, and it's been really, um, challenging, you're pretty hard in dealing with all the COVID overlay non-hotels, and normally, H R duty, and just when we thought we were gonna get a break, we got the S D ninety-five overlay, um, for, um, the top version, which is, it was, of course, the only three was the pedal version, why would they? Um, and, um, doing that, you're actually busy for us, so getting your W two's out, and your ten ninety-five out for your insurance on that, um. Um, and just busy, busy. And of course, you know, kind of, um, against working on recruitment, utility billing. We did some extracts for, um, for their water management plan for, um, I get that updated and rolling. Um, and for I T, you know, um, then actually kind of quite along with, we did replace the router. Um, we already did some, um, outdated equipment, ready to take up for P D and also for the wiping of all the water. Um, on that. And, um, then we kind of helped out a little bit, um, where we touched people on and did it out some of the admin, you know, to try to keep things rolling. We shout out to Uncle Andrew for helping out, leaving them there, angles their report filed. Um, on that. And, um, just busy, busy. Keep wanting to keep them on the treadmill.
What, what page has? Current page has, it says, well, that.
Oh, that's, yeah, I'll sit that, which is great. And that's where you call in, we just try to card them.
The phone, yeah.
Yeah.
I probably thought, but I wasn't sure. I didn't see them little, little tabs up there for people.
Um, yeah, you can type it in front. Yeah, we just screen it out.
Ah, you know.
Yes, okay. Or, and we also have one at the, um, at the desk, let me call them on the phone. I'm so proud.
Oh, cool.
No, I think that's, I think that is a great service because it's makes it ease of pain. It's, anytime we can make it easier for them to pay and give us the city money, that's good.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you guys.
I'm going to ask the, for what, just so you know, Liz and Matt, I'm going to go with you, Liz, first. Your blank screen, so I hope you're there. If you could just hit one highlight of a project.
Well, it's been really busy. I'm assuming everybody's read our, the quarterly report. We have, we have lots of things going on as far as calls, looking into what's possible, what's for sale, what, what can we do with the property. What I want to highlight is the site plan permits. We've got, um, ba, excuse me, four site plan permits, which are permits that are administratively approved, meaning that the use for the land is approved by the municipal code. So it just takes an administrative permit by staff. So we've got a new car wash coming in, Taco Bell's expanding their parking lot, and Devlin and Gilman are, are building a twenty-four-hundred-square-foot commercial structure.
Yeah, that's going to be good.
Yeah, that, it's pretty exciting when you think about it. Everybody thinks nothing's going on. We've got lots of stuff going on.
I bet you do. And I like it because some of these are just right around the corner from my house.
In addition, on, on April seventh, I sent to the council, uh, the notice on the mitigated negative deck for the refreshed travel plaza. It's under the thirty-day review process right now. We hope to be able to bring that to council for the May eighteenth meeting. So I, I hope that each of you have had a chance to review it. And if you have any questions, let us know. And in closing, uh, since Dawn's on, I need to give another shout out to him. We're working on some code text amendments for the zoning code. Uh, these would be ultimately ordinances that we would have to take through the planning commission for the recommendation and then bring it into the council for adoption.
Okay. Good. Great. Anything else, Liz?
No, do you guys have any questions?
You have, you have two grants, uh, the hundred and sixty thousand dollar with the planning grant. How's that going?
We're working steady. You can see that we've got, um, the S B two grants, we've got until twenty-twenty-two, and the LEAP grant, we've got until twenty-twenty-four. So we've got some time, the, the consultants are working on it diligently now. They're collecting all the information, but it, it's going to, it's going to take a while before we come to fruition.
But I like the idea of the inventory of developable land and vacant land. I think that's a great idea because I see things happening. Like you said, I would please to see all the, um, all the activity that's going on. And just, uh, with this inventory that you're developing, maybe we'll even have more.
I know, that's something I'm looking forward. Good.
Good job.
Yes, thanks, Liz, you're awesome.
Thank you, guys.
Uh, Matt?
Yes, thank you. Um, I guess I'm going to do my best to keep this short and sweet also. The highlight of my last quarter has been my staff. If you take a look at this list, the, the sheer numbers of projects that are running simultaneously right now, uh, to me, I think are the most public work there's ever had on their plate. And I, I plan on workshopping a number of these items for, you know, get down into the nuts and bolts and the hard dates that I know a lot of you want to see. But I really, really, my highlight is my staff. And you can see here, without our wonderful staff, all the way down through the ranks, we couldn't get this done. And we really are chugging along. I can't thank them enough. There are some small wins in here that I did want to talk about, you know, in the grand scheme. If you ask Ben, he'd probably say it was a huge win. But the back truck was delivered, the training's been completed, the garage is built and up. And I was down there this afternoon and the maintenance division was pulling power and, uh, air compressor over into it from fleet. Just because it was a big noisy air compressor and we had room in this new building that we so graciously were, um, able to build with your permissions. So, like I say, small wins, but those, those types of projects, you know, they, they seem to drag forever and there's so many little pieces to them, just to build, get a building put in here and put a brand-new truck in it. Everybody from finance all the way through public work was just a massive part to make things like that happen. The, along the staffing, I do want to speak to, you'll see the common thread. Uh, we are in a state of flux with vacancies created by retirements, um, some lateral movements, and, you know, new folks coming in and some of the, our veterans are leaving us here in the next year or so. So we are excited to, we, we welcomed Philip Eubank into the division. He's our newest maintenance worker. Everybody's excited, really excited to have Philip. He worked with us for a few months as a seasonal and we were really blessed to be able to, to scoop him up and get him to work full-time. So that's a little bit of help for Tyler and Ben down there in the maintenance division. Water and wastewater fleet, we're all chugging along. You can see in here, if you did have a chance to go through it, we do have a retirement pending in fleet. And then our other mechanic is moving over to wastewater. We've flown those replacement positions. We have some applicants on the wire for that. I, I was very, I thought we were very lucky to actually receive some applications for positions such as that. It's a difficult position to find in Siskiyou County. Same with the wastewater operator vacancies that we're looking at. We actually had a licensed operator apply for one of those positions, which we really didn't feel was going to happen. So I guess my, my main highlight point for tonight is our staff and how lucky all of us are to have these folks working for us. This is a gigantic list of questions. And I will dive in. If, if y'all want to grab highlighters and highlight what you want more information on, please feel free and I will be workshopping as much of this with you as I possibly can and bringing it up in future staff reports.
Matt, what's our timeline on the Madrona bus purchase?
Madrona bus purchase, I hear Cindy clearing her throat for you, Councilman McCoy.
On a recipient agreement with Madrona, then we can order it right away when that's.
So that would be in May, probably.
Yeah.
Okay. And then theater HVAC design completed, awaiting decisions. Is that just based on the, an old, the old report that we have?
That was in, um, October of twenty nineteen. We have.
What we did with that, if I can interrupt you there, Cindy, was that, um, we came to council and asked that we go look with pace and have the design for the theater HVAC looked into. We looked into it in depth, found a lot of, uh, issues with the initial, what we thought would be a solid fix, um, the first time we put that out to bid. And we pulled back and had a full engineering design done on this thing. So as we spoke earlier, as you spoke earlier, um, we can dust off that design and that engineer's estimate and probably add the, what I'm, what I'm seeing on projects right now are thirty-plus percent cost overruns on year-to-two-old numbers. So we'll get that dusted off and that's why it's on the list. It's, it's been on our minds, obviously, because we have the temporary heater in place. So that's why it's on this list.
Okay. And then under flood hazard reduction on the last page, Matt, work with the sixteen-hundred permits so that we are generally covered with that, with that five-year permit?
So that's a, a deeper question, I believe. There's a permit for the F H R project on the Forest Service and there's an annual F H R permit. So, um, I guess the question is, which one would you like us to speak to?
The five-year permit, sixteen-hundred, five-year. The rant has been, that, that we have been operating without for the last almost two years, probably.
Correct, the one that we have not been performing the work. So staff has been diligent, diligently working on that one with the, with Janay. I could ask Cindy to step up for a minute and give you a quick brief on that if you'd like.
That'd be great. Thank you, Cindy.
Oh, I, we've been working on it, you were saying that there have been lots and lots of changes between the last time, when it was three-up, and when we needed a new one, which was a couple of years ago. Requirements are a lot more stringent and the bottom line that we wanted to wear at the time was that it requires an environmental consultant to do that work. A lot more discussion of bugs and mummies and everything that needs to be protected. So we currently have a small agreement with E Corp, who's our consultant on the F H R project, to, um, to a small assist for us and help us get a, a sort of finish line with that project and possibly help us with a couple of.
And then Ben and Cindy and I met with Janay. We had a phone call, I want to say two weeks ago or so, and went through over a bunch of the, the fine details that Ben's hammering out in the field there. And Cindy's assisting him with that on the paperwork end.
Okay, so two questions then. What can the council do in order to help get this taken care of? Because we'll do anything we can to help you guys out. And number two, when can we expect it to be filed? And, and when can we be expect that our five years is going to start? Are we looking at like May, June, July?
Well, we, we got the assist by being allowed to call E Corp in on this. They, they told us when we initially spoke to them that there, we're not the first small municipality they're seeing go through this. I think each city kind of has their own set of hurdles. So I, I would, uh, I'd be hard-pressed to give you a date on when we expect that to drop back into the five-year. What I do want to clarify, Matt, for all of you, is that except for the emergency work that has popped up in the last two years, we're, we're simply not performing the work. So while it looks like, it, it looks poor upon the department that we don't have it in place, but it's not that we're out there doing things illegally. When those emergencies popped up, we worked with the permitting agency and got permits in place. So I just wanted to throw that out there. We are, we're not out there breaking the law because we don't have this permit. We know that we can't be doing some of this work and a lot of this work just wasn't being done anyways due to other projects and that type of thing. So as soon as we have that date, you obviously will be the first group to know.
Yeah, I, I'm not innovating either than that at all. Um, but I'm just wondering why it's taken us two years? Is it two years or maybe a little more than two years? That's, that's what I like. We like to get it wrapped up. I mean, I've worked with feds in the states before and I know they're a pain in the neck, but, you know, we, we've got to get it wrapped up somehow.
And I think that what, what Matt's saying is with the strategy of bringing in a biologist as opposed to having our staff try to work with, we're, we're, that's, that's what we needed to do. It wasn't immediately obvious because of the changes they made. It became really obvious the last time that we talked with them. And so that's why I'm bringing the biologist in.
Can that biologist make this a priority? Can we pay a little more and make this a priority? I mean, I, I may be speaking out of turn, I don't know, from, from the other four.
No, I, I think, I think we need to look into, yes, how to speed up the process.
Two years is just too long.
Yeah.
We have the agreement in place and we're going to have some kind of telephone meeting, if not next week or the week after.
Then when would you anticipate filing sixteen-hundred after that meeting?
As soon as they get the work done. I, I am honestly not sure how long it will take.
As soon as the environmental consultant gets the work done? Okay.
Okay.
And can we press the environmental consultant for a timeline?
Yes, we will, in that meeting.
I, I'd like to have a timeline by the, again, by the first of June meeting as to when we expect that to be filed and, and, and hopefully it'll be approved when it's filed.
Part of the problem, I think, has been going back and forth.
For two years, it's just, I mean, it's two, two years, this twenty-four-hundred is just too long. Mrs. Councilwoman.
Wow.
It was like, I was like, what minute? Thank you, Cindy, thank you, Matt. Thank you, Steve.
That's why we have name tags. Thank you, Andy.
I started my fourth one.
Yeah, I think I remember who you are.
If it only had a magnet on the badge. I think Rattle one.
Oh.
White recipient, um, this year's, um, positive news, we want just to pop them in.
Oh, what's that?
Did Matt read the email? We got, oh, it's, it's, we got an email from T D D G this afternoon asking us if we don't think we can do our Main Street water project.
Oh.
Thank you.
Oh, nice. That is huge.
Right on. Great news.
Great news.
Thank you.
That's what we like to hear.
Can we put a positive note, Paul?
Three and a half.
Yes.
That's good. That's awesome.
Thank you very much.
Yes, who else? Who's next?
If there's, if there's no more questions for someone, I just want.
Oh, yeah.
One thing.
Anybody else has? Nope.
Uh, okay. One thing. And that is, uh, you, you actually already noticed, but I wanted to formally, um, announce that I'm retiring at the end of June. And I've been here for a little over eleven years. I've worked over thirty years in the public sector, so I'm looking forward to my next adventure.
Congratulations.
Exciting, congratulations.
And I, and I just. I just want to, I just want to add that, uh, us as a council, thank you for your years of, uh, service to the city. And thank you for your, your wisdom that you've, you've given, not only to staff, but to us also. You've shown us a lot of wisdom that we'll be able to use for the future. So thank you for everything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I, I might need the wisdom quote for my daughters.
You're going to get to see your daughters more often.
I know.
That's a sweet thing.
That's, that's awesome getting a contact, yes. No, that's great. Thank you.
I'm, I'm.
Was that, we're done.
Do we want to, um, yes, uh, councilman statements? Do we want to go into that? If we can keep them, yeah, brief, brief as possible.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to let everybody know, I've been working on, um, working with, uh, Mayor Scoot, however, for a week and we've been planning the Lola meeting, the legal obligation meeting tomorrow night. It's, or tomorrow evening.
Evening.
It's going to be at the Jefferson Roadhouse, out of the tent. Uh, we've got thirty-four people.
Oh, wow.
I want to thank Arthur for all his help with.
Yeah, thank you, Arthur.
Uh, we've been working with Heidi and Sue and Arthur and, I mean, making my phone calls. Because people are like, are we really having an in-person meeting? Uh, but we've got thirty-four people.
That's great, wow.
Uh, Sue was hoping for fifty. I told her we'd be lucky to get thirty and we're at thirty-four.
I, I'm, I'm good with that.
I'm happy. We've got most of the cities represented, so. And we're doing it, uh, um, the city of Montague is supposed to be hosting this on their last, their last Christmas.
Right.
And so we're co-hosting with them because most of the people in Montague, even Wairika.
Yep.
Right? So anyway, they're co-hosting. So anyway, they're co-hosting with us.
No, that's great. Thank you so much for taking, for taking that on.
You're welcome, and it's been a pleasure.
It's been a challenge, I'm sure.
Yes, it has.
All right. Mr. McCoy?
I want to thank Steve again for his, uh, his service for the city and I wish you well in retirement and it's very, very underrated, you, I mean, getting out there. And I want to thank Steve in advance, so he probably will thank you for the letter that we are sending in regards to the license plates with law enforcement, to be able to keep, uh, not have to get rid of the license plate photos after 34 hours.
Yeah.
We're, we're gonna bring that on the next agenda because there's still time, really, if I, if the.
So what I want to thank you for.
Sure.
I, I know it does affect us, but I think, you know, I mean, it's great, you know, we want us toward law enforcement and other parts of it.
Well, that's, yeah, that's a huge thing, for our, our local law enforcement.
Yeah, that's why Arthur put it together, so.
Good, thank you.
We don't have the facility, Julie, we don't have the capability.
No.
Not just now.
No, not now. All right, Mr. Wilson?
Oh, I know, okay. Um, yeah, so I want to say best of luck to Steve and, um, I got to know him, I'm in the planning commission, short time here, but I spent with him on the city council, only been a few months, but he's been, um, a lot of knowledge, so best of luck to you in, in future endeavors, and I hope you enjoy your family, because that's where you end up and, so. Family's important, that's why I came back, so I hope you.
Yes, it is.
Appreciate like I did coming back here. Um, let's see, what else? Um, a couple things is, uh, YPD, yes, I, I witnessed, uh, one of our, I don't know if he was local, but one of our guys that was allowed to handle Starbucks, that I Yeah, um, but Officer Wilson showed up with another, I forgot the other officer, he's fairly new. Oh, okay, I can't remember his name. Anyway, they showed up, but they handled them like, you know, professionally, didn't harass them. And, you know, a lady bought him a coffee. He escalated it, he went on his way. I mean, so a lot of people are just kind of looking for something, you know, and it just, but they were really professional, so that was great to see, just calm and, you know, so that was great. Um, uh, and she, she, you did not, I guess I missed it, but I, I didn't realize that the Engine 415, when I was reading, sold for a record amount, that's great.
Crazy, huh?
Because I remember we were sitting here and I asked, like, oh, was it worth a hundred thousand? And I think, um, the yard guy said, oh, no, it's not worth that, we're never gonna get that.
Yeah.
And someone said 30, and so I'm excited to see that.
I know.
At 1145, it went back, so that's great. That's huge, so.
Awesome.
Um, but on that, um, I will wrap it up and, um, whoever's next?
All right, thanks, Cory. Very approachable.
Okay, um, I'm sure you all remember that I'm on the last go committee, I'm actually the chair, but, uh, we just finished all of the review for the MSRs. And I'll tell you, the information that's in there, it's condensed, it's precise, there's not a lot of legal jargon you can just grab on, all kinds of information, so if I can send it out.
Oh, yeah.
To you, I will.
Good.
Thank you.
It's a technical challenge.
Vellum.
Yeah, vellum, that's it.
That's it?
Congratulations, Steve.
And, yes, congratulations. I'm sorry, Steve. By the way, enjoy retirement, you kids, and thank you for your help over here.
Yeah, my daughters are already saying, hey, can you help?
I'm sure that's, you're gonna hear a lot of that, I'm sure. Um, I'll make mine short and sweet too. We had a, a point-in-time, um, a meeting today for the seven counties of the North State. Couple things on that, um, I got re-elected to chair that again for the next year. I'm a glut for punishment. Um, secondly, um, we, uh, actually okayed that we're going to do a point-in-time count. Um, oh, we did locally here, we're gonna be doing one this summer, a point-in-time count for the summer. And, um, come next year, we're gonna, it's gonna be actually the seven counties is gonna be doing a point-in-time count for the summer now too. That was something that I, when I spoke about that today, um, everybody at the, at the, uh, at the table was really wanting to do that because a lot of them, like with ours, can get, actually can get some funding presented to them because of the timeframe of where it falls. So it actually worked out to some of their, their advantage too, some, some of these counties, especially. We haven't set a date yet, so we do have to set, we, well, as far as the, we do have the, the seven counties, I'll have to look that one up. It was August, yeah, something. Ours is earlier this year, we're doing ours in July, but, um, the one for next year is gonna be for the, for the, yeah, for the, all the seven counties to be in August. Um, other thing real quick, um, we're working, like, we're working on, uh, with Shelley Davis and through the county, um, vaccinations for the homeless now too. So we've been working on that, um, trying to set up a time and whatnot on that, and.
Oh, I volunteer for the next one that they're doing, as a program.
Oh, all right.
I'm not giving, don't worry, I'm not giving shots.
Um, last, oh, it would, just real quick question, what would it take for us, because this has been a, a hot topic too, and, um, to do, next stage on how to do a traffic study for here locally? How do, what do we need to do, because I know, well, I know we need to, I, I don't want it right now, but send us some information, so we need, as a council, I would like us to, I don't know if the rest of the council would like to see the stepping procedures to have the.
Traffic study where?
Here in WRE, uh, on, on, over by, on Brew, excuse me, on Brew Street especially, because that's been, because that's been expanded on now twice and we haven't had anything, um, redone on that, so.
So, um, what I could do, uh, and back in China, is that we can work out with, I, I think that, um, well, there's, there's, there's two parts to this. One is, is traffic, and I, I think they call it something different, the traffic study when it's, anyway, I can't remember the term. Um, are you still there, Matt? You may have dropped off.
Yeah, if I was.
Um, there's two parts to it. One is, traffic studies are not intuitive.
Okay.
In terms of how they would turn out because of what traffic engineers do.
Right, right, we talked about that before.
To have a actual traffic engineer, maybe zoom into a meeting and kind of talk about that.
Okay.
And then the other is, is to actually do a traffic study and there's a person down at Pace whose name I have forgotten, who actually can, can do those.
So what I, what I'm just, I guess what I'm asking is just if you could bring it back to maybe the next council meeting on how, a discussion on how that needs to look to us.
How we go about it?
Yeah.
I, I am still here.
Okay, there you are.
Okay.
Input from Matt, input from the chief would be nice, or Lieutenant Best, either one.
Whoever.
Right. And, and, I forgot in my reports to talk about the fact that we're going to be discussing with Calten, that special meeting.
Right.
Week. Um, yeah.
So that would be one of the topics anyways.
Brew Street, that's one of the topics that we're gonna be talking about right there, Highway 3 and, and, well, all down.
Yeah, that whole section. Okay, great. Um, and with that.
Matt, do you make, want to make any comments about the traffic thing, or do you want to just do that when we bring it back?
I think it may be best, like, I can bring it back or I can have Pace fall in and, and explain the intricacies of the requirements at the end of a traffic study, because they're not always good.
Okay. Yeah, let's just bring it back, that's fine. I just want it brought back to the council so we can further discuss it.
Thank you, Ryan.
All right. And with that, I just, like I said, I just wanted to thank you for your years of being here and then all the, like I said, everything you brought to the table and brought, uh, I know I've gained a lot of knowledge just in the last few months, working with you on, on a weekly basis of being, sitting down with you about twice or more a week. And, uh, I've definitely, uh, gained a lot of knowledge, I know that, so thank you. And like I said, enjoy, enjoy your family, that's what this is all about. That's all that's important.